If anybody has anything they'd like to speak to that's not otherwise on the agenda. Excellent, okay. Chairman's update. So as a reminder, while this is our only official business meeting in August, we do have, our full business meeting in August, we do have a meeting on the morning of August 11th at 7:30 a.m. to discuss and vote on the easements for the Asbit River Rail Trail. But the next regularly scheduled selectman's meeting will be on September 14th. A couple upcoming recreation events. There's the Country Mile Band this Thursday, August 6th, starting at 6:30 in NARA, and that's a free concert. There's another free concert on Thursday, August 13th, also beginning at 6:30 p.m., and that is the Dell Smart and Exit Inn Bands. Bless you. Essence of India is Saturday, is Saturday, August 15th, from 3 to 7 p.m. at NARA. And the Second Annual Chinese Music and Dance Night will be Thursday, August 27th, at 6:30 p.m. again at NARA. And just as a reminder to everybody, we have the special town meeting tomorrow night, August 4th, starting at 7 p.m. at the Acton Boxborough Regional High School. So we hope all of you can be there. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. The town, through the Green Communities' competitive grant, has been awarded $245,000 for the following projects: LED streetlights, originally priced at $35,000; interior LED lighting at the Parker Damon Building, the RJ Gray Junior High and the AB Regional High School; HVAC efficiency upgrades at the Parker Damon Building; MDF closet efficiency upgrades at the high school; and Wi-Fi thermostats for the Junior High, Douglas and Conant Elementary Schools. We had applied for $250,000. The state awarded $245. And in years past, when they did not award the whole amount, they would actually make a decision as to which projects got cut. This time, they left it up to the community. So I had some correspondence with the superintendent, and basically the $5,000 cut equated to a 2% reduction from what we requested in funding. So we have agreed that all the projects will be reduced by 2%. So the grant agreement was signed on Friday, and these projects will be underway relatively soon. Many of you may remember, or may be aware, and a lot of it was going on at our last selectman's meeting, where we had some bomb threats and suicide threats, et cetera, going on in one of the condos in town. And it turned out it was what is known as a spamming incident. And the person who generated the calls was actually in Tennessee at the time, and has now been picked up by Le Mans to police. But he also has warrants, even down in Georgia, for doing similar incidences. But, you know, it's one of kind of, I guess, one of the tragedies of our high-tech society, that people can play these kind of spamming games and use a lot of public safety resources for no reason at all. So hopefully, this individual will get the justice he deserves. And that's all I have.
All right. We're not quite at 7:10, so why don't we do the consent agenda? So I'll read through the items, and if anybody has anything they would like to hold, please just say "hold." Number eight, approve CVS property landscape buffer and fencing arrangement. Number nine, approve meeting minutes July 6th and July 20th. Okay. Number 10, approve executive sessions, July 6th and July 20th. Number 11, approve CPC Study Committee charge. Number 12, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Ironwork Farm, October 3rd, 2015. Number 13, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Ron Lipinski, NARA Park, August 15th, 2015. Number 14, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Gregory Catalano, NARA Park, August 29th. Number 15, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Neaton Aurora, NARA Park, August 22nd. Hold. Number 16, Fifth Annual Soldier Ride for Wounded Warrior Project, September 26th. Number 17, accept gift Doug Halli retirement celebration fund, a gift of $50 donated by Wayung Sung Health Department to be used for retirement celebration costs. Doug's not retiring until, like, October. It's gonna be quite the party if we're already...
Hopefully, we get more than $50.
Yeah. Number 18, committee appointment, Ray Kubey, full member CPC Study Committee. He's a appointee from the planning board. And number 19, request dispose of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library. Okay. Peter, you held number nine?
Yeah, I just need to make an amendment to the July 20th open session, or, I'm sorry, July 6th, Seventh Settlement House. Where is it? Common Victuoso's License, it's on page three. It says Cheryl Gould Law Offices and Peter Berry, representing Seventh Settlement South. I'm not representing Seventh Settlement South. I think it's Henry is the person's name, Peter Henry, but that needs to be corrected.
I did see that. Okay, so do you want to make a motion to approve those as amended?
I'll move that we correct the minutes of July 6th open session to indicate the correct name of the person who represented Seventh Settlement South LLC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say "aye." "Aye."
"Aye."
Any opposed, any abstentions. Okay. And Franny, you held number 15?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the way the form is filled out, it says if you have more than 50 people, guests, you should have a TIPS-certified person. And they had, like, 100-something. It was a big party. And they said only about 30 people would be drinking, so they didn't have it. So I didn't know if we cared about that. When they apply, do you tell them you should, because they just mailed to you? So I think we should, well, when is it? It's soon. I mean, it seems that they should be reminded that they should have one.
Okay, Janet?
One of the issues with the form that I don't like is that the question, there's this little parenthetical that says, "If you are planning to have at least 50 people at this event, you have to have a TIPS or TIPS-equivalent certified bartender." And then on the next page, we have a question, "Are you planning to have a TIPS or TRIPS-equivalent bartender, yes or no?" And a lot of people just say "no," and even though they've got 200,000 people attending the party, yeah, I mean, I would tend to think that if it were an issue, I know that sometimes the chief or deputy chief has commented contingent on approved, okay, contingent on their having a bartender. I mean, I really think that we need to clean up that form. And either say absolutely, whenever you're having at least 50 people present of different ages, unless they're all adults, you need to have somebody TIPS-certified or some trained bartender present. But maybe we don't have to, I don't know what we want to do in this case.
I don't have a need to make trouble for this person. But I agree, it would be better if it's just, I agree, I read and understand that I need to have this person in the future.
So we can talk about updating, but I think we have to decide for this one if we want to require that they have a TIPS-certified bartender or not. I do not have an opinion either way.
Well, if the chief said he approves, and they really are only having 30 out of the 100-something people that are possibly going to drink, then I'm willing to go along with it this time.
Okay. So are you okay with it as is?
Yes.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I move that we approve items eight through 19 on the consent agenda with the amended minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, please say "aye."
"Aye."
Any opposed, any abstentions. Okay, now at 7:10. All right. So we have notices hereby given under Chapter 138, Section 15 of the General Laws that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in the Acton Town Hall on August 3rd at 7:10 p.m. on the application of, and I'm gonna mispronounce this, I apologize, Vasudav Inc. for an all-alcohol license transfer from Pegrin LLC, doing business as Red White &amp; Brew Wine and Spirits, located at 578 Masav. Okay, so I assume you guys are the applicants. If you could just introduce yourselves and the application, please.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Peter Nikosia from Tinsborough, on behalf of the proposed license holder, Vasudav Inc. I have Bupesh Kumar, who is the proposed manager, here with me this evening. He's also the sole corporate officer and stockholder for the company. So when you think it's appropriate, I'll, if you have to read the legal notice, or wave a butters list, and all that fun stuff.
Yeah, we've read the legal notice. We're all set there. So if you just want to introduce it, or anything you want to say, and then we'll ask questions.
Sure. I think the paperwork, to a large extent, speaks for itself. This is a longstanding business. The seller, current operator, is here in the audience as well. He's decided to sell. My client is coming in looking to perpetuate this business in its existing form. There's not going to be any changes to, you know, physical premises, or store hours, or services, per se. But the paperwork that's before you contains, obviously, the application, the transactional documents, corporate information, source of funds, personal information about Mr. Patel, about his background. And it's really just a simple transfer that's taking place. Now, Bupesh Kumar has been made more familiar by me with Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, and all of the local rules and regulations that deal with alcohol service. He does have some background as an employee capacity in retail operations, so he's had some practical experience in this realm as well. But he's been well advised, and he well understands that this is a privilege, not a right, and that with that comes a lot of responsibilities about proper service of alcohol to prospective patrons that come in, as should be required, and is required here. I suspect the manager, as well as any kind of person, is going to be TIPS-certified. We will deposit with this board the appropriate TIPS certification prior to being able to pick up the license following ABCC hopeful approval here. So he will receive some additional training in alcohol procedures, as will any kind of person employee. So, you know, beyond that, it's really not that much more elaborate. It's going to be business as usual, with some new faces, maybe some new energy, and they look to be a good business, responsible business partner for this town.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members? Janet?
Well, I've never actually been to the business, so I, are you, do you serve drinks? Do you sell alcohol? I don't really know what your business is, so...
This is a retail package store. So it's the sale of packaged liquor items.
So you're selling wine bottles and six-packs of beers?
Yes.
Do you ever serve alcohol out of the bottle, or?
Not unless we want to lose our license. No, we don't.
Yeah, because what I don't know is whether, under Mass, the Mass laws, because this is something we typically see when we're dealing with restaurants, places that have bars, the TIPS training, if you're actually serving beverages as opposed to closed.
Yeah, that policy, Lisa, who has been a pleasure to work with, by the way, had advised me that the board likes to see at least the makings of some form of an internal policy that's going to be followed by the prospective license holder. So what I gave to you really is just a canned comprehensive alcohol policy, which is probably going to be morphed into an employee manual that's ultimately given to employees here, on top of the materials that they're going to receive from the TIPS certification course. Because most of the TIPS programs hand out canned policies that employers can use. So we'll probably use a combination of both of those things. So for purposes of just acknowledging the point that you want to see a policy in place, we tried to give you some canned, basic information that we...
Yeah, because this appears to be European, or...
It is.
You know, it talks about the importance of if you're in the United States, you have to know the state's particular laws. And I'm thinking, well, that's really what this should be covering, so you need that. So, yeah, whatever, you're better equipped to know what kind of legal requirements you have to comply with, and if you have to, as a package store, have to have, you obviously have to have some sort of practice or policy in place about not selling to underage purchasers and that sort of thing. But whatever, I'll leave it to you, as long as you make sure that the training or the information is Massachusetts law-based, so.
Absolutely. And I think I tried to make that clear in the email that I sent with that policy, that it was something of a more global perspective, so.
That's all for me. Thank you. Okay, Peter?
So this is an application for a license to sell off, to purchase alcohol and consume it off-premises, right?
Off-premises.
Right, yeah. And this is the old West Acton Market, in the center of West Acton, just so I get the location correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, everything seems to be complete to me. I don't have any objections.
Franny?
I was just curious whether you have a relationship such that the old owners train you in this local business or not, or are you just coming in and buying it right now?
No, they're just coming in to buy it right now. I mean, obviously, value to us in purchasing is taking advantage of the seller's experience. So to some degree, there is some training that is taking place about the particular operations of this store. But Bupesh Kumar has had experience in general at these other locations, which I've listed in the application, for responsible alcohol service, ID-checking procedures, dealing with an intoxicated patron, things of that nature. But certainly, we'll look to the seller's guidance as well.
Okay. This is Janet, just to make you picture, this is the old Skips, West Acton Market. Do you remember what used to be called Skips?
Actually, I've seen the shop that has the sign. It looks like a temporary sign, maybe? I don't know. Or maybe it's not. But I've seen Red White &amp; Brew. It's a very kind of catchy, very clever, I think. But anyhow, yeah, I've seen that sign, and I actually don't necessarily know West Acton well enough to remember what was there before, so terrible memory, so.
Well, I am welcome to town. And I really, I hope that maybe you consider some of the food that's decreased in time. It's sort of changed over time to be, I've talked to Phil about it, you know, in time, it became less and less food and more primarily alcohol. And so I'd love to see a little food again.
I have no questions.
Okay. My only thing was, you know, again, I saw the same thing with Janet, the server's guide was quite European, so I'm glad, yeah, glad to hear that. This was just sort of a template.
We'll deposit along with the TIPS certification, the actual one, which will be given to the employees at the time, prior to picking up the license.
Great. And my only other question was, are you guys planning to keep the name, Red White &amp; Brew?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I think it's a great name, like Janet said, so I'm glad to hear it. Okay, no questions from me. So can I have a motion to approve, please? Unless there are any questions from the audience. Okay. Now can I have a motion? I move to approve?
If I could amend that motion, I'll move to approve it with, on the condition that they provide the TIPS certification for all employees and the appropriate policy that they're going to use for the establishment.
Okay. Somebody want to second that motion?
Second, the amended motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor, please say "aye."
"Aye."
Any opposed, any abstentions. Okay, thank you very much.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, we're not quite at 7:30. Why don't we do the warrant, do you think the warrant article hearing will take very long, Steve? I mean, we're just voting on it, right? Took me obvious one article. Okay, why don't we do that? We'll do number four, warrant article discussion recommendation for special town meeting. So all of you have seen the warrant, everybody should have received it in the mail by now as well. It's the same as, you know, kind of what we talked about previously, but we didn't have it on our last agenda, so we just wanted to see if anybody had questions. And then also, the selectmen need to take a position on the article. So first off, any questions from board members? Yes?
Given that a number of people have raised the question of what the intended use of the property is, and that our position is that that will be determined later, I would like that added to the warrant article.
You would like it added to the warrant article?
Oh, sorry, the description, sorry. Is that possible at this point?
No, because it's been mailed to everybody.
Okay.
So, not really. It's in my presentation, extensively speaks about what the kind of process that we will hold, and why we have not currently determined the use of the...
Okay, as long as that's there, because, you know, that's obviously been something that's, a number of questions have come in about that, so. Oh, did I just miss that line?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So apparently, I, along with everybody else, missed that line.
Yeah, so we have, I have received a number of emails, which have responded to various people. Most people actually have indicated that they are pleased that we haven't decided, and that they would like to just see an open and inclusive process. And so that's sort of what I've reassured people, that we will be doing, something that's open and involves a lot of community feedback.
Okay. I mean, otherwise, I have no issues with the article. I just wanted to make sure that that was taken care of adequately. That's all.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, so I assume, based on previous discussions, that people are pretty comfortable voting in support of this. So can I get...
Move to recommend?
Thank you.
I would just like to speak to my support for this.
Sure, please do.
I support this warrant article. I would urge citizens to vote for it. In my role as a fiduciary of the beautiful resources we have in this town, I think this piece of property is comparable to other properties that have been acquired over the years by the town fathers and mothers, including the town common, for example, NARA Park, more recently, Wright Hill Conservation Land, Great Hill Conservation Land, other pieces of property in town that make Acton the community that all of us want to live in. And the location of this property is comparable to those other properties that have been purchased in the past and have added to the community of Acton. So I support this because of the prime location of this property. My main concerns are, first of all, the shortness of the town meeting. We haven't been able to get enough information out to people. It is in the middle of the summer. A lot of people are not available to even come to town meeting. That was a function of the end of this litigation that's been going on for five years. That also resulted in a process where we would acquire the property without a clear identity of what would happen with it. And as Katie has said, I certainly support an open and community process to determine what we would do with this property. Certainly are plenty of municipal uses that have need for space that we haven't had available to locate those uses on. My other concern is that this is very expensive. We have about $10 million, as I understand it, in-town reserves. This would use up almost 20% of those reserves. Those reserves are a buffer against overrides and other unexpected costs that might come up in the future. One of the things that we could do with this property that makes acquiring it attractive to me is we could sell a piece of it. This gives us complete control over the property. If we don't purchase it, it goes back into litigation. Unfortunately, state law, well, it depends on how you look at it, but state law priority is to grant the ability for people to use their property as educational facilities, which is the purpose of the childcare facility that's been proposed for this property. We've objected to the mass of that, and the court has said that that size that's proposed is reasonable in its view. So I'm concerned that we could lose the litigation in the long run and not have control over the property. This gives us complete control over it. We could sell part of it for development of an appropriate, we could put out an RFP that would identify exactly the kind of development that we would have on the property. And if, after a year, given the way most process works in this town, recommendations are that we should get back some of the resources that we put into purchasing this property. We could certainly do that. The property's big enough to develop part of it and put a municipal use on another part of it. So those are all the reasons why I would support this proposed purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And I just want to, I should mention that we did put up a FAQ document on the town's website, and Steve, Peter, and I recorded an informational TV show that's been playing on Acton TV, and that's also linked on our website to try to get more information out there and try to answer many of the questions that we have heard. As Peter mentioned, it has been a quick process, so getting information out has been difficult. But I think we've, you know, tried to make a number of efforts to do that. So I thank you for your support. I think I saw Franny's hand first, so.
I'm in support of buying this, but it sort of brings to mind, it's very random and based on the legal history, that we came to purchase this land. And I believe that the town would be better off, as we develop Kelly's Corner, to have more control there. And I would really want to see us put more of an effort in to look at all the property around Kelly's Corner, and see if there's any that we would be interested in purchasing. Because that, it just behooves us to try to have control, which is one of the main reasons why I think buying this is important. And it all has value, and it could always be resold. And I don't believe that actually towns can buy land just to resell. You have to have a specific reason to... But in any case, we do have a lot of reasons. And so I think that we should take this as a reminder to more systematically really look at the property around Kelly's Corner. Thank you.
Janet?
I wanted to say, first of all, that the Finance Committee met and had a chance to talk about this beforehand, and I mentioned it in my reports, that they voted to recommend it. It was a somewhat split vote, with most people voting to support it, even though at least one or two of them expressed some concerns about the price and the shortness of time for the public to even get informed about it. But, and then the other thing that I agree with Franny, that it would be good to have a process with regard to potential commercial properties that we have for open space. We have a crew that goes out and kind of cultivates owners of properties that are potential open space candidates for us. So that a lot of times, by the time we have a proposal to buy open space, there's a history of a lot of back-and-forth conversation, so that you don't have this sort of hodgepodge of, oh, here's an opportunity, we better go for it. It's, with open space, it's a little more orderly. There's a history behind it, and it'd be good if we could figure out a way to do that here, maybe with our new land use economic development person. Maybe we'll be able to get more of that a little bit organized. So that's all. But I did move to recommend, way back before Peter, and what he said, anyhow.
Okay, do we have a second to Janet's motion to recommend?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the audience? Yes, Sid?
Hi. Thanks for all your hard work. I definitely would like to see the town have this land and the litigation go away. And I'm sure the developer also would like to see the litigation go away. Nobody wants that. Has anybody, you mentioned about, there's like $8 million, $10 million of reserve cash. This will be 20% of it. Has anybody done a study of the competing items for these dollars? I mean, the focus just seems to be on, let's get rid of this litigation, and we'll worry about it later. I don't know what else is involved in town. I'm a little uncomfortable. I mean, I guess the developer is dictating this thing. Why, as you all talked about, it's the middle of the summer, people are away, we don't, I haven't really had time to know what to do. I don't know how to vote on this thing. I definitely would see, like to see the town get it and get the land. It's zoned residential at the moment, as opposed to anything commercial. But as you mentioned, if the town... But as you mentioned, if the town developed it somewhere or some developer, the property's worth a million bucks, so you get your million dollars back, you're paying $800,000 just to make the litigation go away. That's a lot of money. This developer knew this project would be a problem. He knew it before he ever came in, he's not dumb, he's an experienced developer. And through all the litigation, he tore down the trees, he dug up the land, so not only you're paying for all the work he did, it's also thousands of dollars to restore the place. So I'm conflicted. I would really like to see the town buy this thing and end the litigation, I'm uncomfortable with the price. So mostly I'm going to listen and listen tomorrow night to what people have to say because I'm conflicted on exactly what to do. My last comment is, this whole thing for the past five years has kind of been done in secret. We, the town people, are not involved, other than what we can scrape together and find out and come to some selectman's meetings. Everything else has a committee. The senior center, the safety building when it was developed, everything else has had a committee. This has had no committee. There's lots and lots of people in town with expertise on things like this. I've been retired a long time, but I had 40 years of construction management, I certainly would donate my time. If this thing doesn't pass and the litigation goes on, I'd like to see a committee of people in town, if there's people here has every kind of expertise there is. And it would way reduce the litigation cost if it does continue. And it should have been doing that all the time. I suspect it's the legal counsel for the town who doesn't want anybody else involved, which makes it expensive. But I don't understand why it's so much secret, it's almost like a secrecy. And I appreciate all the work you're doing and all the decisions you're trying to do, it's a tough job being select when people are pushing you from both sides, so I do respect that. But it's just sort of like out of nowhere, this thing came up in the middle of the summer and that's, that's sort of unfortunate. And yeah, in legal terms, you know, when you have a settlement and it looks like a reasonable settlement, you do it, you don't sit on it. I watched the video and I think your point's well taken. So those are my thoughts, what you think is right, and I'll listen tomorrow night to what people have to say and make up my mind. But I sort of, you know, I'm resentful of this $800,000 premium to this developer. He's getting paid for everything he did wrong and we're getting nothing back for all our costs and he's getting everything back. But I try and focus on not that, but what's best for the town of Acton, that's the bottom line. So thank you for your work and listening to me.
Thanks, Sid. And just to clarify one or two points, though, that the land actually was recently appraised at 1.225 million and Walker paid over 1.3 million for the property. So it's not appraised at a million and we're paying 1.8. So just for that factual clarification, but I appreciate your comments and your concerns, they're definitely things that we've all considered when, you know, thinking about this.
Yeah, well, he tore down the houses, I don't know what they're worth, but they're worth something. They're gone, the trees are gone, the place is all dug up and there's going to be a lot...
Well, the appraisal was done recently.
I understand.
The 1.225...
But compared to what he paid for. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Sid. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I just want to appreciate the fact that you guys put together that video. I think, I hope we have a lot more of that kind of sharing, because I think that was very useful to be able to share with people, a Q and A and also a video specifically about this.
Okay, warrant article. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Now it is 7:30. So first, I'll state that we had on the agenda a alleged over-service hearing for Stopa Mexican Grill in Cantina, but they have agreed to a time extension to September 28th at 8:00 PM. So instead, we have, the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on August 3rd, 2015 at 8, oh, 8:00 PM, but except that they agreed to move the hearing to 7:30 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall for, in order to show cause for an alleged over-service incident at Poe's Barbecue and Ribs, 344 Great Road, on February 22nd, 2015. Okay. Would you guys approach and introduce yourselves and the situation, please?
Thank you, Detective Renshaw for the Acton Police Department. I'm accompanied by Officer Joe Aikum, who, he'll be available for any questions if the board has any.
Okay.
And Deputy Chief Burrows is also attendance for follow-up recommendations.
Thank you. Detective, would you just walk through the situation a bit and let us know what happened that night?
Certainly.
Can you, do you want to swear? Do you swear, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're good? All right. Excellent. On Sunday, February 22nd, at approximately 18:27 hours, which is 6:27 in the evening, the Acton Police and Fire were dispatched to the area of number 169 Main Street for a reported head-on motor vehicle collision. Officer Joe Aikum, sitting to my right, was one of the first responders on the scene and he found two motor vehicles, two motor vehicles involved in the crash. The first vehicle was an SUV-type vehicle and the other vehicle involved was a passenger car. Witnesses on scene told Officer Joe Aikum that the driver of the SUV was injured, he went over to assist the subject and found the subject to be initially unconscious and in an unresponsive state. Approximately one minute later, Officer Joe Aikum was able to alert the individual, gain the subject's attention, and the subject became somewhat conscious. The officer asked the subject if they were injured and the subject stated no. At this time Officer Joe Aikum was able to detect what he believed to be a strong odor of an alcoholic beverage to come from the subject's breath as they spoke, and further that the subject's eyes were bloodshot and glassy. The officer asked the subject if the subject was aware that they were involved in a motor vehicle accident and was, was not given any type of response from the individual. The officer then asked the subject where the subject had been coming from and the subject stated they were coming from Poe's, meaning Poe's Barbecue in Acton. The Officer Joe Aikum asked the subject if they had anything to drink and the subject replied, "A couple," meaning a couple of drinks. At this time Officer Joe Aikum noted a slur in the subject's speech. Due to the seriousness of this crash and the damage to the subject's motor vehicle, the subject's care and custody was then turned over to the Acton Fire Department for their treatment and she, the subject was later transported to the Emerson Hospital. Officer Joe Aikum then spoke to the witnesses on the scene and learned that prior to the motor vehicle crash, the SUV was traveling south on Main Street and it was followed by a witness. The witness stated that at the traffic lights at Mass Ave, the SUV stopped for the red light, however, remained stopped when the light turned green. According to this witness, who was still behind the SUV, she honked her horn and the SUV still did not move. The witness thought the operator may need help and drove around to the side of the stopped SUV. While she was alongside of the SUV, she noted that the operator of the SUV was slumped over the steering wheel. This witness then exited her vehicle, walked over to the passenger side of the SUV and knocked on the window and got no response. The witness then walked over to the driver's side of the SUV, knocked on the window and at this time the officer, the operator of the SUV awoke and then sped off southbound on Main Street. The witness then got back into her vehicle and discovered the motor vehicle crash in the area of number 169 Main Street. It was later determined that the operator of the SUV had crossed over the double solid center line and struck an oncoming motor vehicle in head-on manner. The location of the collision was in the other operator's lane, meaning that the SUV had crossed over into the oncoming lane completely and struck the other vehicle involved. The subject involved in the accident was charged with OUI and on June 9th pled out to a continuous without a finding at the Concord District Court, which is tantamount to a guilty plea. That's essentially why we're here.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the selectmen? Janet?
I have actually more questions probably for the representative opposed, but I have some questions because I don't deal with criminal docket sheets. So the arraignment was the ninth and then it was continued without a finding until for a year? And it said, finding of not responsible, what does that mean?
On the, as part of what commonly happens, in this case wasn't any different, this, this subject pled out on the day of her arraignment. And as part of, let's just call it a plea bargain, to facilitate her, the party's willingness to take responsibility for her actions in the criminal sense, the court found that the civil motor vehicle infraction that accompanied the OUI offense was found, she found not responsible. So essentially she, the subject pled out to a continuous without a finding for a period of one year, had to enter an alcohol education program and the light, the usual 9024D disposition, and then the civil motor vehicle infraction was just, there was no finding on it and that saves down the road registry ramifications.
Okay, you just mentioned something else I wanted you to decipher. 24D, 45 LOL, which I assume is not laugh out loud, and one day BAR.
Yeah, 45-day loss of license, that's a court-ordered suspension of the license and the half-day at the brains at risk program, those are standard programs that are, along with a plea to a no OUI offense, those are commonly adhered to.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Peter?
I'm just wondering, this happened on, in February, so that's quite a period of time that's gone by. Do you wait until the court disposition before you ask for a hearing before us or what's the process there?
We generally do not, I think the board is notified and Deputy Burrows can correct me if I'm wrong, but as a procedural matter, while there's an open court case, we do not request a hearing before the board because the court case could go one or two directions. In this particular instance, upon the arraignment date, the defendant did plea out. So there was a period of time between February 22nd and the June 9th disposition date. And for several reasons, there was no arrest that night due to the operator's injuries, she was summoned into court, so that's why you have that protraction between the February 22nd incident date and the eventual plea out on her arraignment date. It took that long for the case to make its way through the system.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So she still had her license in between that time?
She did.
Oh, okay. Until...
Do we know what exact injuries were suffered by either party?
I'm not, I wasn't at the scene, maybe Officer Joe Aikum could...
I know, I know he injured his wrist when she struck his vehicle, I'm not sure on the extent of her injuries, though.
Oh, okay, so, because it says in the report that she was transported to Emerson?
Yes, just because she kept losing consciousness, I was worried about a head injury and I prefer that she be checked out in that case rather than me try to question her at the scene.
I see. And was there, was there any determination as far as what her level of intoxication was, a blood alcohol test of some sort, a breathalyzer?
No, we didn't get any of that evidence.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there a representative of Poe's here? Okay, would you mind just stepping up and introducing yourself and I'm going to have Janet swear you in?
Hi.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, would you mind introducing yourself?
My name's Paul Pie, I'm the manager of Poe's Barbecue.
Okay, do you want, is there anything you want to say about that night before we ask questions or anything you remember?
I wasn't on duty that night, but I think the day after, on the police show and I talked to my wife and also the bartender on duty that night, see what happens. And they said she'd come in with her husband and her friend and they had a little conversation, you know, before they're serving, because we know they are regular customers and we know their families, so they always talk. So then she had one drink and her husband and her friends, they would stay there and she said she wanted to go home and take care of the kid. And so with, you know, when they had, before they're serving, you know, because we know them, so we also have a little conversation with them. And they say they didn't notice anything but normal and when they, when she left, you know, she talked to her husbands where she's going and she's going, you know, taking care of the kids and to cook dinners. So that's what happens at Poe's and the husband and her friends, they would stay there for another, I think like an hour and a half or so. And that's what happened at Poe's.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Janet?
I was wondering, do you have a receipt or something from her, the purchases, that they, that you said she had one drink and you said it's her husband? Or her friend's husband and her friend?
Her husband.
Her husband and her friend stayed for longer?
Stayed for longer, right.
But do you, do you happen to retain the, sort of the receipts, that they bought, they bought drinks or whatever and then they paid for them? Did you keep the charge slips or...
We did, but the next day and the police came, they requested and they took that since...
Because that's, because that is something we don't have, at least I didn't see it in the packet. We don't have any information about the time when she was at Poe's. We know that she said she was at Poe's, but I didn't see a copy of receipt or anything indicating how long it had been since she was at Poe's. So I didn't, I don't know if you had that information?
I don't, no.
Yeah. Because I, I mean, that would be helpful for us in sort of gauging how much time had passed. And the other question is, you don't happen to have video camera, do you? We have at least one restaurant where we've required the installation of a video camera and it's actually been helpful for us in assessing the condition of customers who are drinking when subsequently get into trouble, but okay, you probably don't. It usually happens when, when, you know, some board like us requires it, but okay.
Well, the next day, the police came and took the receipt.
Do you know, do you know who the officer was who took, oh, you, oh! Maybe, should I swear you in? Do you have information that you'd like to share with us? Or not?
I didn't have a receipt.
Okay, but, because I, I think it's the information that the receipt would contain, like the time of the payment and that sort of thing, because right now we don't have any record of what time she was at Poe's. So I know that she got stopped, she got into the accident around 6:27, but it's really unclear what was going on, how much time passed before that, so. But you said that you gave the receipts to them, okay.
Right. The only way we can get the receipt is go back to the computer to retract the day what happens and, you know, we have to repo the receipts out and probably have to, have to find some, you know, whoever developed the software to do that, but there's a record in the computer.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that we, if the police have the receipts, we should be able to get that information, but that's information that I would like to see, frankly. I don't, I'm not ready to make a decision right now, so.
Peter, questions?
Did you, you say the police came the next day and told you about this incident and asked some questions and took the receipt from you?
They talked to the bartender on duty.
Okay, did you speak to the person that was working that night also?
Yes.
Did you ask him what time this woman left?
She had one drink, she, she said she left about, you know, 20 minutes, 25 minutes of when she, you know, walked in.
Well, when did she come in?
She did come in like around 6 o'clock, 5:30, 6 o'clock. So I wasn't on duty, I...
Yeah.
Mainly I asked, I said exactly what happens.
Yeah.
We just had to serve her the one drink and she wanted, she wanted to leave first and her husband was there and, you know, everybody, there's some other patrons there and, you know, she said goodbye to some, you know, somebody she knows and...
Do you...
Everybody thinks, you know, she's...
Are all your employees tip certified or do you do training for employees?
Yes.
Do you have an attorney that you work with at all with your business?
I do.
Okay. I mean, we're faced with a situation here where this woman was so drunk that she passed out at the stoplight in Acton and somebody tapped on her door and woke her up. And somebody tapped on her door and woke her up and she took off. And then crashed into a car about a mile down the road. And you're telling us that this person was not intoxicated at all, had one drink and was perfectly fine when she left your establishment? I, you know, it's, there's something missing here. I mean, I can't, you know, from the information we have that she told the judge where she last drank, it seems to me at least that she had to be intoxicated when she was in your establishment. And she was served a drink there. And, you know, she, shortly after she left, she passed out in her car. And so I don't know what, if you have, you know, a suggestion about how that can happen without, you know, some of your employees being aware of it, I'd like to hear it. I mean, your establishment has been here before. I mean, I, people complain that we force them to pay money for lawyers. From what I'm seeing, the best thing you can do for your business is hire a lawyer. That'd be the best money you could spend to protect yourself against this kind of thing, to make sure that you have all the kind of processes in place that's gonna avoid these problems in the future. It's, it's better to pay a lawyer to, you know, get the proper training, put in the videos that you need, whatever you need to do to protect yourself against this kind of, of incident. You're serving alcohol, you've got to protect yourself against this problem. And we've got to protect the people in Acton. There was a serious accident here. Both cars were totaled.
You said that I hire a lawyer to working within my employee?
Yeah, to make sure they get the proper training, to ensure that they're not over-serving people who are intoxicated.
Well, her husband was, you know, what I know is her husband was there. And also her best friends was there, you know, before she left. And I don't know, a lawyer can, lawyer maybe can go to court to help us to defend things like this happens. And when this kind of serving, I don't know, you know, exactly what happened after she left or before she came in. And we think that she's fine and her husband think that she's, you know, okay. Or what, you know, and since the last incident, I, there's, it's so much we can do. And we trying to do, I say, how about people came, had a couple of drinks before here? I say, start some conversation with them, see how they talk, you know, how they move. If they have something funny, then, then, you know, they always eat a meal. My wife will be there and we both, you know. Right now, the whole place of, you know, all the employees at Pose are front. They all tip program training. They're all certified. And I feel terrible. I haven't seen a, you know, the whole family usually come to Pose every week. And I haven't seen them since. And she lost her license. And once I saw her on 2A, she was a walk to work. And I lost customer, she lost license and could be life. And I've been at and serving alcohol for more than 20 years. And we never had an incident serving minor. I just feel terrible. And we try to, you know, we try to create some our own little things, you know, try to find out, you know, from a last incident. As anything happens, we try to learn something and try to prevent that. And I talked to the employee, say, well, we only serve her one drink. Her husband had, she had, well, he had three beers or four beers. And she had a one, you know, vodka with a cranberry juice. And they've been stay there for like a 20 some minute and then she left early.
Well, it's like Janet mentioned, the video, for instance, a video system can be very helpful for us to, I mean, show that what you're saying is accurate. And, you know, then there wasn't any over-serving. I mean, the information we have right now is incomplete. But it's, from what you're telling us and what we're seeing on paper here, you know, there's, we have to determine what happened and it's hard to do. I mean, videotapes help us to do that, so.
Franny, do you have a question?
Yeah, I also don't feel we have enough information. If we did have a receipt to see what she had and if we knew if she had other health things that were causing that. And also, I, my question to you is, when you talked to the employee, the bartender who had served her, what did they say? How did they describe her behavior at the time?
Like I say, you know, now we, you know, they always, you know, say hi and talk to the customer a little bit, you know, like a one or two sentences to feel. Because sometimes people do have a couple of drinks from other place. So then they came here and she's, she was perfectly fine. And once, you know, when she left, you see, her husband was there. And she think that she's okay. And she say, well, you know, the other friends would take him home. And, you know, we all very shocked, just, you know, disbelief. But it did happens and looks like that it did had a last drink at my place.
Ching Sun, any questions?
Yeah, you mentioned that her husband ordered three or four beers and, you know, were alcoholic beverages served to other members of her party before she left? You know, in sort of in what quantity? Is information that I'd like to know.
Uh, what I talked to him is, is, you know, she say Mike probably had a, you know, two beer. And the other party had a one drink. And she stayed there about, you know, around 20 minute.
How much longer were, were her husband and her friend at your establishment after she left?
Uh, they probably stayed there for like another hour, hour and a half.
So quite a long time?
Yes.
Okay. And then a clarification question for the officers. Main Street and Mass Ave is the corner of 2A and 119?
No.
No?
It's Kelly's Corner.
It's Kelly's Corner?
Mass Ave and Main Street is Kelly's Corner.
Okay, and so initially, so the, so the second witness saw the SUV at Kelly's Corner?
Correct.
And then the SUV drove down, drove down towards?
Main Street, towards Maynard.
Main Street, towards Maynard, so it was driving, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, can, my question, first of all, I want to say that I share Peter's concerns. I mean, this is, you know, our nightmare is that you let somebody get in a car and they have an accident. And, you know, it's really, I'm really concerned about what happened here. And that nobody in your establishment appeared to think that she was intoxicated enough. For the incident that happened, she must have been pretty intoxicated to have passed out at the light and then to have caused an accident. And from the timing that you've given us, it sounds like she didn't have any time in between leaving your establishment and when this accident occurred. If she left around 6, if she came in around a little before 6, stayed for 20 minutes and then left, that adds up to her cutting straight out and causing this accident. So she didn't have time to drink in between, which to me is indicating that she was drunk enough prior to coming into your establishment that having one alcoholic beverage put her far over the limit. So I'm, I'm very concerned with that. And my question is for the officer that followed up. Do you mind just introducing yourself? You can go up either with your friends or at the, wherever. Okay, can you introduce yourself and then Janet swear you in?
I am James Cogan.
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So can you just talk about when you, when you went back the next day?
Yeah, I was requested by the chief to follow up and to talk to the people at Pose and to request that they save any documentation that they had concerning the service of this individual.
Okay, and so you spoke to the bartender that was there that night?
I did.
Okay, and what, what did she tell you about the incident?
She told me that she did, in fact, recall them being there. And much like what I've heard since I've been here, that she was with two other or met two other individuals there, one being her husband and one being a friend of her husband's is how I interpreted it. They did provide, she did provide me with the receipt, which I returned to the chief. Sorry, I don't know where it's ended up since then. But she explained it, and to the best of my recollection, there was an order of some food, and I want to say beef and broccoli comes to mind, and several alcoholic beverages, which she explains stating that the woman that was arrested or charged with this motor vehicle accident had had one drink.
And she, did you ask her about the woman's state when she came into the restaurant at all?
I believe I did have a conversation with that concerning that, but I don't recall exactly what she stated to me, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. So I don't know if people have any further questions or comments. We'll start Janet again.
Yeah, I just have one question. And this sort of gets at Franny's sort of allusion to the woman's condition or medical condition. I, I have often heard that, you know, you're not supposed to miss mixed drinking with certain kinds of medications. And I don't know if, what the effect is. I honestly don't. I know that long term is probably not a good, good idea. It's probably tough on the organs that filter blood and all that. But I'm wondering if there are certain meds that somebody might take that either before, well, probably before having one drink that would cause a person to lose control like that? I'm just, anybody?
Of course, there's medicines that can enhance the effects of alcohol. There was no declaration that I saw from any of the medical records that were submitted to the court as part of her plea that would indicate that. Whether or not there was an omission, I don't know. But one thing I would say in particular to this case, when she was asked at the end of her plea, as required by law, as to whether or not she had a drink at a licensed establishment or not, she did indicate on the record that she had her last drink at Pose barbecue. And I apologize for not pointing that out earlier, but I feel this was a good time to restate that if I missed it.
So I'm troubled about this woman because she, she was so inebriated or whatever. She was so out of it that she didn't even remember after the crash had occurred that there had been, at Kelly's Corner, there had been somebody knocking on her window who roused her from whatever her passing out. So her memory was pretty, pretty lousy. Anyhow, but apparently, we do have the documentation that confirms that she was with some friends and her husband at Pose. As I said before, I would like to see that just because, otherwise I don't have any information. I'd like to see what it says if she showed up at 6:00 and then, and then had the accident at 6:27. It still kind of gives rise to a concern that Peter alluded to about what, what was going on? I mean, if she had a vodka and cranberry juice, unless there was something, if she's really intolerant, I have difficulty believing that that would be enough to just push her over the edge and have her pass out, in which case if that's, she's that sensitive, she shouldn't be drinking. But, yeah, it makes me think that there was something else going on that contributed to her problems, so.
Franny?
I assume, I always get so confused because we're not a court of law, but we're just here to figure out if Pose gave her too much or there was evidence that she'd already been drinking too much. What confusing is that really what we care about is that Pose doesn't let somebody out who has been drinking too much. So that always seems like a little bit of a disconnect.
We're here to decide if they violated their liquor license.
Right.
And one of the parts of their liquor license is not serving people who are visibly intoxicated or not over-serving somebody.
And there's nothing in the liquor license about letting people out the door who, before their last drink, they looked okay. But now that they've taken a drink, they don't look like they're okay to drive? I mean, is that?
You know, I think you're supposed to, I don't know if that specifically is a violation of the liquor license.
Anyway, but so, so I, my question is, was the woman in court asked, "Did you drink before you went to Pose?" You know, or, I mean, I realize...
No, she was not, according to the...
I mean, so, so she was, everybody's just going on the understanding, which doesn't seem to make sense, that she went to Pose at 6 o'clock, had one drink, went out and was falling asleep at the wheel?
I, she was not asked about her whereabouts prior to her last drink. The only part that's required of the court, and the only part the court wants to know at the time of her disposition, besides whether or not she's doing it knowingly, voluntarily, freely, you know, with, you know, with full knowledge of the consequences of pleading out, the one question she is asked at the time of the disposition is if she had a drink at a licensed establishment, no more, no less. And they don't ask any kind of history proceeding to that. It's just whether or not, and that's the only information that I could relate to the board. So she did in fact say she had a last drink at Pose. That's the only thing that is required of her to give a statement to a court, nothing else.
Well, I don't have enough to be able to say that Pose served her when she appeared inebriated, but I would, yeah, that's all I could say. I don't, I don't have enough right now to be able to say that. But I would, it would be better, as Peter said, to, if you had video surveillance or something, to be able to see what someone's behavior was like. If this, this is the second time you've been here this year. And so it's, it's worrying me.
Okay, Ching Sun?
So as a comment, the evidence is, the evidence that as to whether Pose served an inebriated person is, I believe, as the other members of the board have said, inconclusive. However, I believe it is clear that the person left Pose barbecue and did not really have much time to do anything before the incident, the accident. The driving time from your establishment to the location of, to the location of the accident, as well as, as well as, you know, the, the timing that you stated in terms of when she came in and when she, and how long she was there, roughly confirms that. And so I would say that regardless of what the board finds with respect to this specific incident, that a video surveillance system, you know, would be a good installation. And I would recommend that the board require, regardless of the finding of this incident, that Pose install the appropriate video surveillance so that when, when, you know, inevitably this sort of thing happens again, because it will. It's just life. You know, we have the ability to look directly at what you and your employees are doing and thus do not have to rely on, rely on circumstantial evidence. And that's my comment.
Okay, I'm not sure if we would be able to require video surveillance if we don't find an issue here. I'm not, I'm not sure about that. Just, I don't know if anybody here knows that. Usually we find an issue and then as part of the findings.
Can I say something?
Sure, yes. Do you mind just speaking a bit closer to the microphone just because it's also on TV?
Yeah, I look this, you know, it's a, there's something missing. And, you know, from a Pose drive to where Kelly's, you know, Kelly's Corner to Mass Ave, that's no more than five minutes, no more than 10 minutes drive? I mean, definitely no more than 10 minutes. That's only one light.
It's probably about 10 minutes, yeah.
It's about, it's about two miles. And if she, she's so drunk, she can pass out at the light. I mean, her husband, I don't think anybody's husband would let his wife to drive.
Our question really isn't about whether or not her husband let her drive. Our question is about whether or not you over-served her. And again, I think our concern... And again, I, I think our concern is that the timeline that you've provided and by the account of when the accident happened, there wasn't time for her to stop on the way in between and get a drink someplace else. She had her last drink at your location, and so if she was drunk enough when leaving your location to have this kind of accident, I think many of us are concerned that you served her a drink, period. Again, I think having a video system might help clarify, you know, for us being able to see, did she look intoxicated, but, you know, by the evidence I have, it's hard to think that she wasn't showing any signs of intoxication when entering your establishment, because one, I don't care what your tolerance is, one vodka cranberry doesn't cause you to, to pass out, you know, 20 minutes later. So I, I think that's, that's the concern here and that's my major concern with this.
Well, I talked to my wife, because right now most time she runs this location, and I say, you know, in a, in a long run for our benefit, you know, it'd be better put a surveillance camera, so it, you know, for any, not just about, you know, just for the whole place, for safety and for, you know, if this kind of situation happened again and also there's a couple other incidents, I think last year that somebody had a fight outside of my restaurant, well, had nothing to do with us, but if there's a security system, it would, so we're already planning to do that.
Okay, that's good to hear. Peter?
So you're saying you, you'd be, I think what Katie is saying, in order for us to make it a condition of your license, that you install a video surveillance camera, we'd have to make a finding here that you violated your license by serving somebody who was intoxicated.
I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, I mean, so it's, I'm not sure either, but I don't know, Steve, did you have something you were going to say about that? No, okay. But assuming that's true without knowing for sure, you do have one prior, we did make a finding earlier that you violated your license in a circumstance where some people were arrested for being intoxicated after they had left your establishment. I mean, I, if you're willing to put in the, I for one, if you're willing to put in a video surveillance system that would help us in the future to find out exactly what happened in these circumstances and agree to that in writing, then I'm willing not to make another finding here which would add additional maybe whatever to your record, at least a warning, I guess, or whatever the board might decide might be appropriate sanctions.
Yeah, we're already planning to put a security system.
And he's saying that they, that the, that you surveilled the parking lot out in front of your place too? I mean, because I'm concerned, I think sometimes people go out to smoke pot in the, in the parking lot or do other drugs in the parking lot and come back in and continue drinking. I mean, I, I think you can probably surveil your parking lot too, that, that might protect you as well, I mean, you know.
Yes, we, yeah, we, we think, we're planning to put a security system, which is, you know, monitoring the front and back.
Yeah.
We've been talking about this, right now, my wife's the most time, you know, closing the store there and you've probably not been there, our back door has a hallway going to the restroom, then there's another door going, coming to the dining room for security reasons, so I say, you know, it'd be better to put a security system so you can monitor who's at the back before you go into the back and so.
Okay, I mean, I don't think that's a huge expense, it might, it's an expense obviously, but I think it's well worth your investing in that, again, to protect yourself.
Yep. Why don't we have the receipt and can we get the receipt? I don't mean, I have to prolong this, but I just would like to request that we, when we have this kind of situation, that has been helpful in the past, see those.
It sounds like it might have gotten lost or we don't have it, it was, yep.
The police have it? Have you been sworn in? I don't remember. Yes, you have, right?
I did not get sworn in.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I believe the receipt is in my office, a copy of it. I thought it was in the full packet I gave to the prosecutor, but that's my fault.
Okay, yeah, well, thank you. I think that one of the questions I had had to do with when this person, Person One departed at the restaurant, what her condition was and I, you, no, it's your, your fellow officer who actually spoke the next day to whoever the woman who was on duty. I don't know if she said, if she had a chance to observe the departure of the customer and whether the customer was having trouble negotiating.
Yeah, I don't remember her making any statements about that.
Okay.
It sounded as though she was familiar with the customer, she knew her by name in that she had come in frequently, so she, but she did not make, from my recollection, any statements concerning her having a difficult time getting out of the restaurant.
Right, right.
Do you, excuse me.
Yep, go ahead, yeah.
Do you recollect, do you remember the receipt? Is it consistent with what the gentleman's saying?
Specifically, I, what I recall from the receipt is that there were several alcohol purchases, exactly what they were, maybe some beer and, and also a vodka drink, I believe, comes to mind, as well as a food item. I don't remember it being a very large receipt, there wasn't a lot of information on it concerning a lot of alcohol that was served, but it was consistent with, with the story in which the bartender or the, the woman who was working the day I was there gave to me, saying that she came in at a specific time, wasn't there for very long. I, I remember looking at the receipt and thinking it was consistent with the story she told me.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. That's helpful.
Yeah, so I think there are a couple of things, I think we can either, if people are concerned and want to see the receipt, continue the hearing and, you know, do that and get the receipt for our next meeting, or we can decide whether or not, I mean, the first step is deciding whether or not there was a violation of the liquor license, you know, and, and these are always hard things because we're, we're not, you know, we're not a court of law, we're not going to have all the evidence. I mean, my, my feeling is just the timeline that you have provided for when she came in and when she left and when this accident happened and the timeline, you know, from what the officer can remember about the receipt he saw and the state of the woman that Officer Joe Akum found her in, to me, there's no question to me that she was incredibly intoxicated when she left the restaurant and she wasn't there for very long, so it's hard for me to not see how she wasn't over-served. So my, my inclination is that this was a violation of their liquor license, but I don't know if others feel that way or if they want to hear more evidence or if they feel that there was not a violation. So I think those are the things we need to discuss first because that's the first step that we have to, to decide is if they violated their liquor license. Franny?
Going on the understanding that she wasn't visibly to damn, that's what's confusing is because the police found her to be glassy-eyed and, and falling asleep and visibly.
Everything I saw from my training experience points to her being heavily intoxicated when I dealt with her at the scene of the crash.
So I was about to say that it didn't sound like she was at the time, but if she was five minutes later or 10 minutes later looking visibly.
Yeah, the time I dealt with her, at about, a little after 6:30, she would, she seemed highly intoxicated to me, but she'd also just been in a car accident, so.
Yeah, but the, but she had fallen asleep at the light.
She had the M8, she had the odor of alcohol, she had the bloodshot eyes, slurred speech, everything consistent with intoxication.
All right, and that's what's very confusing, so.
So I think that's.
The question is at the time they served, over-serving means that at the time they served, she looked that way, and that's what.
And so I think that my concern would be if somebody who is tips and trained and certified and a bartender does not think a woman appears intoxicated when she was very, very visibly intoxicated and caused a car accident 20 minutes later, to me, that, that's incredibly concerning, so that would be what I would say. But Ching Sung?
So I agree with, I agree with some of what both of you have said. I agree that it is very concerning that no one at your establishment felt that she was intoxicated and yet 20 minutes later, she obviously was so heavily intoxicated that, you know, she caused a car accident, a head-on collision in a two-lane street. But the question before the board is whether or not your, whether or not your employees over-served someone who was intoxicated. And on that front, once again, without, without sort of, any sort of hard evidence, I am reluctant to, to find, find you guys responsible only because, only because, you know, I, I don't like relying on, you know, strictly, strictly hearsay and, and some circumstantial testimony around, you know, something that happened six, you know, six months ago. And so therefore, my real, my real objective here would be to get a video surveillance, that you guys get a video surveillance system and if, and, you know, I think that that, I think that going forward needs to be a requirement so that we can determine what happened at the scene for ourselves as opposed to relying on, you know, what, what people's recollections were the day after or, you know, six months later.
Janet?
All right, I, I'm having a very hard time. I understand that the evidence looks very bad. The woman had a terrible accident and honest to God, if I had been one of those people on the road, I would have been really upset that she was driving and, and, you know, especially even encountering or passed out at her wheel at Kelly's Corner would have been disturbing to me, but the difficulty I'm having, and it, it doesn't have to do with the receipt, okay, we can assume that the receipt says it what it says, although I would like for the sake of completeness to see what the receipt says because nobody here is able to say exactly what they say around what it says or it had entries on it, I'd just like to see it for the sake of completeness. But I'm having difficulty sort of drawing an inference from, she crashes at 6:27, she, we have evidence that she was at Poe's, she had one drink, and, and there's, the people, the witnesses who saw her said she did not appear to be inebriated and, you know, that's why, and, and apparently she didn't have navigational difficulties getting out of the restaurant that would have called attention to her. So I'm just finding the information that I have about whether or not she was inebriated at the time when they served her to be kind of up in the air, and so I'm really reluctant to find that there was a violation because that is, as Ching Sung said, it's, that's the standard that we're supposed to be looking at. I do rather like Peter's idea of if the owner, manager is willing, it sounds as if you're already planning to install some sort of system for security reasons, there may be in addition a reason for you to install it for the sake of, of having a record in case something like this happens again, and, and given that you had that prior incident, maybe there is greater need for it. It may be that not every establishment needs a system, but it's something, it, I really do think that it ultimately is for the protection of the establishment to have that because otherwise you have this, this discussion where the Board of Selectmen is, is up in the air about what to decide. We don't, we don't have the concrete evidence that, well, at least I would like, and I'm, and I'm uncomfortable sort of making, drawing conclusions from the information we do have. I mean, circumstantial evidence can be very, very good, but, you know, this is not, this is a case where there's this little gap, it's those gaps in times, I don't, I don't know if she had like a big bottle of vodka in her car, I, you know, maybe not, but, or she had a little nip bottle someplace and she was, or, or she was doing something else. I mean, she was dropping pills, I, I don't know what was going on with her, but, you know, there's some, I just feel as if there's something missing that's bothering me, and so it makes me very reluctant to, to find an over-service violation, so.
Peter?
I want to commend the woman who stopped and tried to help her and knocked on the window and then followed her and reported to the police what she had done at the, at the intersection. She was a real good Samaritan in this situation. I guess I would move to find no violation on the condition that the manager agreed to install, agree in writing, adequate to the Chief of Police to install a surveillance system and maintain tapes so that we can review future incidents as they come up within 30 days, so that's what I think would, I would suggest for resolution.
So you're making that motion?
Second.
Okay, so we can talk about it. Franny, did you have something you wanted to say?
Sometimes we get recommendations, I was wondering if Deputy Chief Burrows had a recommendation about what you would want to see.
The Chief asked for a one-day suspension if you found a violation.
So typically we find a violation and then have some sort of conditions, this is atypical and where Peter's moved to find no violation but put a condition on their liquor license saying that they have to install a camera. I suppose that's within our purview.
I'm not saying we put a condition on the liquor license because I'm concerned that we don't, without a violation, we don't have, I'm saying on the condition that he agree in writing satisfactory to the Chief of Police to install a, within 30 days, he submit a letter to the Chief of Police describing inadequate surveillance system that he would maintain to, and maintain tapes to allow us to have, you know, review of these situations in the future.
And if he doesn't, then what would happen? I guess.
Then he would come back here, I would think.
Okay. But you've now found that there was no violation. I just want to be clear.
Right, that's what I, that's what my motion is, yeah. There's no violation provided he agrees to that.
Okay.
This is sort of a tangential thing, but can I ask why a surveillance system is not a standard condition of a liquor license?
I, I think the ABCC doesn't make it a condition and so they're not a condition of the liquor licenses in town, yeah. Yeah, it's a, right, so I mean, when we go to renew all of them, we could consider making it a condition for every establishment in town. I think there are, you know, a number, I think there's only the one that we've made it a requirement of, on their liquor license so far, but no others that have, I mean, there are a number of places in town that haven't had any over-service violations, so it's not as though this happens everywhere, but.
Okay, I was, it was just a tangential question, sorry.
Okay, so we have Peter's motion and Ching Sung seconded. Are there any questions from the audience, statements? Okay, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye, I'm opposed, and any abstentions? Okay, so that is, passes for one. So thank you, so I think, you know, the, the vote tonight was just conditional on you, you know, providing proof to the Chief of Police that you've installed a adequate surveillance system within 30 days, so if you could just make sure that you've done that and otherwise we'll have to call another hearing, I suppose.
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you, and thank you all very much for coming tonight. So as you all remember, we voted our long-term and short-term goals a few months ago at this point, so we have 10. 10 short-term goals and five long-term goals. So, the idea was to sort of assign everybody and so we'll assign everybody to two short-term goals and one long-term goal, just to kind of be in charge of keeping an eye on it throughout the year, throughout the fiscal year and, you know, don't go off and do things, you know, crazy on your own, but just sort of connecting with town staff and Steve and keeping an eye on seeing that, you know, we're doing this from the selectmen's perspective. So, everybody filled out the doodle poll indicating their preferences. So, my thought on how to most equitably assign these is that there are a couple instances where only one person has signed up for a goal. So, in that case, that person would be assigned to the goal. And then, there are, I believe, I believe Franny, Ching Sung, and I would all have one short-term goal based on that method. And Peter and Janet would not yet. So, my plan is to, and I have an app that lets you randomly select something out of a hat, pick a name out of a hat app, because I don't actually have a hat on. So, I would pick your two names and then whoever's name comes up first, you would pick your first goal and then say it's Janet and then Peter would go. And then for the next round, I'm going to pick everybody's name out, because now we all have one of our top goals. We all have one goal. And then I'm going to pick everybody's name out of the hat and they would get to pick their second goal in the order I pick it out of the hat. And then, we will pick our long-term goal in the opposite of that order. Except for Ching Sung, you already have your long-term goal. So, I think that's fairly equitable, if that sounds okay to people. Does that make sense?
So, I don't have any major objection to what you're saying. I was just, would like to suggest that only Janet and I voted for the town website goal and my goal already probably involves working with IT. And so therefore, to save on our connection with town staff, you know, I'll happily take the website. So, that way, I'm just working with the IT guy if Janet's okay with that, if the rest of the board is okay with that.
Really? Mr. Janet?
That's fine with me because you probably have better background anyway. You talk their language, right?
So, that's the website, you mean the website one?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm already getting create voluntary email list used for surveys and general info, right? Which is obviously IT-related, right? And so, town website would also be IT-related. And I think that just makes sense because, you know, it's just me connecting with IT staff.
Sure.
Okay.
And again, just to remind everybody to keep Steve in the loop anytime you connect with town staff.
Of course.
That was my question. This is really new. I mean, are we expected to be meeting directly with town staff?
No. So, the expectation is really just to have somebody that's sort of, I don't want to say keeping an eye on it because Steve and town staff are already doing it. But it's just to sort of feel more connected to our goals. So, it's just, you know, assigning a specific select person to this. And then if things come up around it, Steve or whoever in town also has somebody specific on the board that they know to go to, to say, okay, you know, Ching Sung's a person about the town website, why don't I chat with him about that? You know, because you run into issues of open meeting law if you talk to too many people. So, it also gives them somebody to talk to, you know. And Ching Sung could say, hey, it's June. We haven't really done much about the website. What's happening with that? You know, so it's just, you know.
Do you want to take comments about what we're willing to relinquish to sort of reduce the number of choices? Like, I'm willing to relinquish on the, get myself out of the rail trail stuff.
I think, I think, I think if we go that route, it's going to get a lot more complicated. So, I think it's easier if we just let people pick off of, you don't have to stick exactly with what you said here. But I think it's just easier if we say, okay, I'm going to let you and Peter pick your first goal first, then we all have one goal, and then we'll just go in order and pick our second goal. You know, because if we start getting into who's giving up what or whatever, it might work, but it's going to take a lot. I think it'll take a lot longer. I mean, if it turns out in the end that nobody is happy with what they ended up with, we can definitely look at it a different way, but I think it's going to work out. Okay.
I think that, I recall the one year that we did this before, we just sat and talked about it at the goal-setting meeting and we took care of it. Just, it was actually much easier to talk about it.
Yeah.
But now, now you've got, everybody's kind of committed to certain goals now.
Well, right again. So, I'm not saying you have to be committed to them. But it's just, it was just to say, okay, there's clearly only one person that has selected these goals. Let's assign them and then let's just get the other ones done. So, let me do the two of you. So, just to clarify, so Ching Sung, I'll just take you out because you now have start overhaul of town website and create voluntary email list used for surveys and general info.
Yes.
Franny, you have the fixed shuttle. I have the activate the North Acton Fire Station Committee. Okay. So, now, I'll take my name out of my hat here. Janet, you can select your next goal.
It's like the Minuteman.
Okay. Yes. But I'm not lying. It did come out. Okay. So, next name would be Peter.
I'm sorry. Did you say Franny? What Franny has?
Franny has.
The shuttle and the senior center.
No, just the shuttle.
Just the shuttle.
Because she only has one goal so far.
So, what did Janet take then?
Janet took the Minuteman.
Oh, okay. I'll take the Walker property.
Okay. Okay. Peter. Okay. So, for the next one, I'm putting everybody's name except for Ching Sung in the hat and then I'm going to select out of there. And so, we'll just go in that order. Okay. And I did not cheat. My name didn't come out of the hat. So, prove that my hat, that does feel like cheating. Okay. What did I picked? All right. I'll take the bike safety one. Okay. Next name is, Ching Sung, Franny.
I guess just because I'm involved with the Senior Center Study Committee, I'll take that. But I was, in terms of interest, the bike safety, which was taken, and the housing were both interesting.
I can switch with you if you want. I mean, I like the bike safety thing a lot as well, but it's.
Yeah. You know what? I mean, I feel like because I'm on TAC, I'll be involved. It doesn't mean that we're not going to be involved.
Nope.
It just means that if somebody needs a contact and make sure to keep this person apprised of what goes on. I guess I'll stick to this, oh, God. So, you're saying we can't ask other people because I see that Janet and Peter are, also requested the housing production plan. So, that's what I'm deciding between pretty much the Senior Center's proposal to spring meeting or the housing production plan. So, I guess for this year, since I'm so involved with it so far, I'll take Senior Center.
Senior Center?
But I'll just state that for the future, I'm happy to be much involved in the housing production plan.
Sure. And again, we'll all be involved in all of these things. I think it's just, you know, it's just having.
Being a contact.
Yeah. And it's just, again, making us connected, more connected to her.
Okay.
Okay. The next person is Peter. And then Janet, I'll just remind you, we are going to go in opposite order. So, you get to pick your long-term goal first, but.
Okay. So, I guess my only other, my only option is the housing production plan.
Yeah. So, is housing production or sewers?
Sewers.
For West Acton Sewer. I understand that everybody.
There is a sewers on here.
There is.
Yeah, but I didn't pick sewer. So, I'm going to go with the housing production plan.
Franny, do you want to pick sewers? Because that was one you had expressed an interest in. But see, Janet didn't pick Senior Center. Could we then do, could you do sewers, Franny? And then we could do Janet take the Senior Center and Peter could do housing production plan?
I'd rather do sewers than the Senior Center.
Okay.
Because I'll, you know, I don't, you know, I didn't support that proposal.
Well, I was interested in sewers. I can take the long-term sewer. And so.
Well, okay.
I'd rather, I'd more interested in the long-term sewers, though.
The other, the other way.
I know. Hold on. You know what will happen if I take the Senior Center thing?
Yeah.
I'll sabotage it.
So, let's not do that. The other way that it could work would be if Franny took housing, Peter took the Senior Center, no, hold on. Janet took housing, Peter took the Senior Center, and Franny took sewers. But it's up to the three of you.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, do you have a strong reference? I'm fine with that, but they have to. I'm actually good with sticking to the Senior Center.
Okay. So, then Janet.
Are you good with housing or?
No. The problem, the problem is that, Franny, that neither Peter nor I picked West Acton Sewers. You did. But apparently.
The other way to do this is that, Ching Sung, you had picked sewers and Janet had picked the website. So, you could take sewers and Janet could do the website. That would be the other ways to do this.
No, Ching Sung was doing the website.
That's what I'm saying. Right. That's what I'm saying. But both of you picked the website and he had also picked the sewers. If you don't want sewers, you're the one that currently has it, you could swap. But that's again, up to the two of you.
Franny, what do you want to do? I don't care. I'll do.
Yeah. I don't really care either. I just, because I'm so involved with the Senior Center Study, it just seemed like I don't have to go anywhere to find out. But.
But that, that's why it would be easy for you to keep on top of it.
Right. So, I think that's why it makes sense for her to have sewers or to have the Senior Center, which is what she currently has. It just means you get the sewers, which are you okay with that?
I don't know. Are we doing anything with that?
We're doing the study.
We have a study. We have a feasibility study. That's fine.
So, it's completing that and, okay.
Yeah. Very unpopular, but you know.
Where is the feasibility study? Is it, I mean, is it, that's something that's happening this year, right? It'll be had for.
I, you know, at least I have some background in it because.
Okay. So, we're going to call that.
I have all of Nancy's files from way back when.
So, I have a great idea. Janet, I'll take Senior Center. And if you take that sewers, we should be talking together because I know that you have some community center issues to discuss with that. So, we should make sure. I mean, obviously, we're not going very far with these positions. So.
Right. It's not, it's not that nobody's going to talk about the ones that are not assigned. It's just, it's really not that serious of a thing either.
I know. This is very minor.
So, now we're going to go in opposite order for picking the long-term goals. So, Janet, you can pick your long-term goal first.
Hold on. Now, Janet, just let me make sure here. You got one, Katie? Are you taking the North Acton Fire Station too? Is that?
Yeah, because I was the only one that picked it.
What's your second, Janet? I've only got you down for.
Oh, I got the sewers and a Minuteman.
And a Minuteman.
She had picked that first.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's, we're on long-term, right?
Yeah.
And we're just taking one.
Yeah, because there are only five.
I actually, I'd like to do the long-term capital plan.
Okay. Okay. So, then Peter, you're next to pick.
I'll do Kelly's Corner because I'm.
That makes sense.
I'm on, I'm the liaison to the Kelly's Corner Committee. So, I'm on top of that.
That sounds good. Okay. Then Franny, sewers or build new Senior Center? Again, these, the long-term ones are going to be, are going to be.
I'm taking the capital.
Capitalier.
I'll take the sewer.
Okay.
So, we're going to end up working a lot together.
Yeah, there you go. Perfect. And I will take build a new Senior Center slash community center, which is fine. Okay.
So, what did Ching Sung take?
He had picked the nursing, he was the only one assigned to nursing, had picked nursing service. Okay. It's a system.
Your take, you're the Senior Center?
Yeah, because that's what's left. And that's fine by me. Exactly. Okay. Done. Lisa, I'll, we can, of course, you got it? Okay. Perfect. All right. Speaking of Senior Center, no, Senior Center Study Committee is deferring their update. Is that correct? Yes.
Yes. The Senior Center Study Committee, and I apologize, I was wondering if there were any people that came tonight or because it was on the agenda.
Oh, did both of you? Huh? I know.
I don't know what Charlie's hand motions mean.
Why is there no agenda?
Well, you were at our meeting. You were there the other day, Lisa. So, he has no excuse. He was at our meeting when we acknowledged the fact that we weren't ready to present at this meeting. So, we're going to present at the second meeting in September.
September 28th. It was not, we were, didn't know in time to take it off the agenda.
We just don't have enough details and there's so much uncertainty about what the goals are.
Yeah. Okay. So, we'll be back on the 28th of September. Okay. So, review the RFP for Morrison Farmhouse. So, Steve put together some bullet points. Do you want to talk about that?
It's really not an RFP yet because with all respect to the two attorneys on the board, I didn't put the legal mumbo jumbo in yet. So, you know, mainly, you know, based on what we talked about last time, it seemed like there was some desire to try to make it as broad as possible and also try to articulate what the town would fix up versus what we would expect a tenant to fix up. And as I kind of went through the list that you all had seen by Dean Charter, it seemed to me that a lot of the elements were life safety issues. And if we're going to be landlords, we need to be concerned that they're done correctly and not necessarily ask a tenant to do that. So, in item B, I listed 10 things that I thought we should probably do the required upgrades on just to assure a level of life safety. Also proposed, I know we talked about kind of a short-term lease, but it's kind of like, well, it's going to be long enough to get somebody an interest. So, I proposed a three-year lease with option to renew up to two years. Anything more than a three-year lease, we'd need town meeting approval anyways. Also asked the proposers to come up with any type of cosmetic improvements. As you know, there's probably some painting, et cetera, that needs to be done there. I think we should want the tenants to do that. If in fact, any of the respondents have livestock and they want to use the paddock area, based on some concerns we had heard, we'd like to see some kind of livestock management plan. For example, how would, how the community gardens would be protected, how are you going to manage livestock with the amount of dog walking, et cetera, on the property? And those of you who may remember, a few years ago, a big issue on Morrison was meadow management. So, how would, how would the use of livestock help in respect to meadow management? And one thing I hadn't added, but Bettina drew it to my attention today, is the paddock is not in the best of shape, particularly the fencing. And I think we may want, if in fact we're going to allow livestock there, that the renter be responsible for fixing the paddock. Now, I also put in here, we'd gone to our insurance carrier and asked them for some levels of liability for insurance. And it seems like, even though this is what they recommend, it seems to me it's pretty exorbitant for the average person to get this type of insurance. So, we may want to think about that. The board may want to maybe have some other thoughts about insurance. But basically, you know, I tried to put together, well, at least I thought I heard the board say at the last meeting in terms of elements.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. So, are there questions from the board, suggestions? Peter?
I unfortunately missed the site visit and I have, I missed the history of what's been going on with Morrison Farm the last two years. I haven't, a few years, I haven't, I wasn't at town meeting when the last proposal came up. But why is the barn not being made available?
Generally felt it's not safe.
Unsafe.
It's been deemed unsafe by like fire.
Oh, okay.
And it's, the estimates we had to fix it are quite expensive.
I mean, if you want, Peter, we can get you down there sometime to have a look.
But like.
We won't let you go in the barn.
Yeah. People aren't supposed to go in the barn.
Okay. And the plan is to rent it while, I know there's a committee still working on a master plan. Is that, that would?
The Morrison Farm Committee is working on the master plan and there are some elements they've been working on that they have CPA funding for.
Okay. And that'd be consistent with renting it. Okay. The only other comment I would have is under the umbrella liability, that's usually additional insurance on top of the underlying insurance. And you've got a $2 million aggregate for occurrences under umbrella and $3 million under general liability. So, that should be like five, I think, instead of two. Because it's got to be additional insurance on top of the underlying, right?
It's right out of the email that our insurance carrier gave us, but maybe they had a typo in it.
Okay. I mean, usually in my experience, the aggregate would be higher than the underlying $2 million. So, you might want to check that.
It should be, it should be more, right?
Okay. Janet?
Yeah. I have a question about the insurances. I think, I mean, obviously, I think it's a good idea for people to have umbrella liability insurance. a good idea for people to have umbrella liability insurance, whatever their circumstances, but I'm wondering whether the, the requirement of general liability insurance is because we're contemplating that they might be doing, they might have livestock, or they might be doing something other than just living in the apartment, in the house, or-
Right, I mean, I think there's some assumption there that other things would be going on, like the livestock, et cetera.
Because it's not, they're not just a tenant, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like your typical renters insurance, correct?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Franny?
So, the idea is that they rent for money, and that they're gonna propose-
I, we would ask for a proposal, we would ask for a proposal, uh, that they would, uh, in, in, in light of everything in here, they would give us a proposal of, of a lease, and we'd have to evaluate it, we'd probably have to put a committee together to evaluate it, and then decide, I mean, there's two things, when you do an RFP, first thing you have to decide is who's qualified, who, what respondents have responded responsibly. Secondly, um, you kind of have to interview them and decide which plan makes the most sense, then the last thing you take into consideration is the financial piece, once you've kind of culled it down a little bit, so, uh, I guess we'd be asking them, in fact, to doing some sweat equity in the fact that they'd have animals there, what would they be considered to pay rent?
Or if they don't wanna do sweat equity, they don't want animals, what, you know, I think that's our problem, is that we're so over the place about the uses, that setting one, you know, rental amount would feel a little weird, so we're asking them to propose it.
Yeah, it's, it's just sort of weird, and it's sort of like, because it's sort of like, we're gonna get confused.
I mean, the other thing is just, I mean-
Are we looking for the high bidder, or are we looking for the reasonable bidder?
Well, I mean, we're looking, we're looking for use that we feel is compatible at a reasonable, reasonable quest. Now, I mean, I guess one comment I'd make, and, you know, kinda put this together, thinking that it'd be a residence, did get an email, and I think Katie responded to it today, by a organization called Pets for People, People for Pets, something like that, dot org, um, and it sounded to me like they might be more administrative, maybe office space, which may raise some zoning issues, I'm not sure, but I didn't take into account that kind of use when I put this together, but keeping in mind, it is a residential zone.
Uh, Ching Sung?
Um, so, a few comments, uh, the first is that I think if we're not having animals on the property, the insurance is egregious, um, I don't see why you would need $5 million of coverage if you're just living in the house. So I think that perhaps we should have the insurance be variable based on what the use, what the, what the intended use is, I mean, obviously with animals and whatnot, if you're gonna keep some, I, obviously, that needs to change, but, uh, I'd like to look at that, I'd like to see that, uh, broken out a little bit better. Second, I'm not a fan of the option to renew, I think a three-year lease is fine, I think by that time, we should have an idea of what we wanna do with the property, and, um, and we should just keep it to a three-year lease, and, um, you know, revisit it, um, when the time comes. Uh, and the third comment I have is, there was also an email that came in that suggested that, um, we use the residence for idle wild farm workers, uh, I don't know if people saw that, um, that's an idea that I would be interested in visiting and looking at.
So I think, again, the venue in which we're thinking that all of those would happen, all the ideas would be proposed, is, is through the RFP, so I think this leaves it open enough as well, that if I at a wild wanted to propose that, then they could respond to the RFP with that proposal. I thought it was an interesting idea, um, it was from somebody not involved at Idle Wild, so, you know, who knows if Idle Wild wants to do that, but-
I should explain, Joe Will is, is a member of the Morrison Farm Committee, and he also is a land steward on the Land Stewardship Committee.
And a Recreation Committee member.
Yeah, he's an outdoorsy active guy, so, yeah. And he's also a very good clerk, for, he takes very good minutes.
Uh, my one question too, is we had mentioned during our discussions at the last meeting about this, um, about having it as not a deed restricted, but as sort of an affordable unit for people, so I didn't know if we wanted to add something to say that we would give preference to, um, people that meet the affordability guidelines in town or not, I mean, that might complicate things, um, but if affordability was a goal of ours, that would be something to consider adding to this, um, but otherwise, I mean, I agree, I think we've gotta look at the liability, um, because that's, you know, that, that's quite high, and could be very expensive, um, for some, for people, it'd make it impossible for them to live there, so, um, but otherwise, I think it's generally a good, a good outline. So I don't know if there were other proposals for changes to make, and otherwise, we'll have Steve add in the legal mumbo jumbo, and, uh-
Is this a decision the selectmen would make, or is this your-
Definitely, definitely, we'll let you guys make this one.
Were there questions or anything from the audience? Charlie just wants a liability in case a goat eats his vegetables, so.
I think you answered all my questions, but, um, yeah, I was sort of gonna ask, do lower-income applicants get priority, and how do you choose the lucky winner, and, um, do people just propose their monthly rent and cost equivalent of animals eating invasives and that type of thing, and how do you compare, but I guess you guys will just be the committee that reviews all the applicants and somehow come up with the lucky-
I think we have to decide, Steve, if we want the board to be the committee that looks at all of the applications, or if we want a separate committee that narrows it down and makes a proposal.
I mean, you know, typically, if you were doing like an RFP for a designer, let's say an architect, you'd have, it's required under the law, a, what they call a designer's selection committee, where you have, you know, kind of a standalone committee that would look at the qualifications, look at the proposals, and make a recommendation. I'm kind of envisioning that kind of process for this.
I think that makes sense, and I think that we could do that, having somebody from the board, somebody from the Morrison Farm Committee, because that would keep them, you know, involved in it, and maybe Nancy, you know, just because she, she had been somewhat involved in this as well, um, you know, and whatever, somebody else from town, um, you know, whoever else, um, but I think that might be a good idea. So I think a couple outstanding questions, how do people feel about if we wanna put something in there about affordability, do people get preference or not, or do we wanna not put that in there?
I'd like the idea, but it gets very complicated about what are our goals, I mean, because we have, we would have affordability, and then we have if they're gonna do work on the house, and then we have if they're gonna do livestock and help the land, and, and there are so many factors, it, it, we could say, we like the idea of affordability, but to rank them right now, um, seems like, oh, mess up.
Factor, I mean, I was, I was having, I mean, what Franny just said is exactly the struggle I was having with this.
Meantime, yeah.
It's broad.
Yeah.
I'd like to agree with what Steve just said, I'm perfectly happy putting something language to the effect of, you know, we will consider affordable housing, or, you know, whatever, as a factor when we do the evaluation, but at the end of the day, I think that having a short and broad RFP, and then having the subcommittee, or, you know, group of people or whatever you wanna call it, evaluate all the proposals that come in, and then make recommendations as to, you know, a smaller number, I think that that would be the most effective way of doing it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that also, I mean, I, I think we're looking for creative proposals, that price isn't the only thing, um, benefit to the community is as well, if somebody wants to bid lower because they, they can't afford a bigger price, if they're gonna also offer us some kind of benefit to the community as part of this rental, and that would, that would weigh as well, so.
Okay, so it sounds like generally, add something about affordability, not saying preferred, but factored in. Um, next question, I think, is the, do people wanna keep the option to renew for two years, or no? We've got one feeling on that, anybody else have feelings the other way?
I, I think that we could, we should leave it out, I, I, just to keep our options open, um, you know, if we decide that we wanna add that in, we can do it later, but, you know, three years is a long time, of course, it's not a long time where the Morrison Farm is concerned, it seems to, you know, it's a short time, but I'm hopeful that we'll have figured out what we wanna do long-term with it, so.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay, sounds like that's, as long as you're good, Franny, okay, so let's take out the renew, option to renew, um, okay, so are people feeling generally okay with the, the outline of the proposal as is, with Steve making some changes to the liability, adding a comment about affordability, and taking out the option to renew?
Yes.
Yes, Franny?
I just would like to have something upfront at the top, really clarifying, I mean, I'm assuming that will be in there, you know, really saying what we're looking for, you know?
There'll be a, a statement, yes.
An introduction, okay.
Yeah.
Because I started wondering if I was remembering right what we had decided, you know, it doesn't ever say, we're looking for somebody who wants to rent with certain conditions, um, it just-
No, I was more, mainly tonight, wanted to focus on, did I hit the elements right that the board was concerned about?
Yes, and I think you did, thank you.
And do we wanna put a timeline in here at all, or do you wanna figure that out later?
I think timeline's gonna, one, depend on how quickly item, stuff in item B gets done, I mean, I think realistically, we're probably looking at a springtime tenancy, I would think.
Okay, so you just might wanna kind of work back from that, about when people would apply, and then how long the committee would take? Okay, yes, Franny?
Yeah, the timeline-
Actually, it's really important, because a renter would wanna know when the town's gonna make these improvements, whether-
Well, I mean, well, the improvements would be done before anybody would be moving in, so, you know, I, I would think that'd be a kind of a fall undertaking for us, with, with an eye towards, you know, let's say, March or April tenancy.
Okay, so then I think we just wanna say, you know, RFPs do X date decision made, you know, we're expected by Y date.
That's the legal mumbo jumbo.
Legal mumbo jumbo, legal mumbo jumbo, Nina really likes it when I use that, so. Um, okay, do you wanna vote, or are you feeling comfortable with the suggestions, Steve? I, I think we're good.
Go forth.
Yeah, go forth.
Yeah.
I think we're good with you doing it as is. Okay, excellent, and I think that's everything, unless people had questions about their reports, or anything else they wanted to bring up.
Uh, Janet, oh, sorry, not Janet, Katie.
What are we gonna do?
All right, um, uh, one question is, the committee stuff, uh, do we wanna take care of that now, or are we gonna do that later, or what?
What committee stuff?
Well, when we, the committee review the applications for stuff.
Oh, I think let's deal with that at a later date.
Okay.
Yep, uh, Franny?
Well, I didn't report on anything in my report on MAGIC, but, um, I do wanna say that we are gonna be looking for, right now, the person in town that's most interested in, I'm just smiling, because I see my daughter in the audience, newly home from college, um, the MAGIC took on a project this year of a study on climate change adaptation, and we're looking for somebody from each town who will be sort of the point person for the town, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Like a staff person, or a citizen?
It could be a staff person.
I didn't read Keith's email that way.
You didn't?
No.
Who's email?
Keith Bergman's.
Oh, Keith Bergman's.
Yeah.
But you didn't, that, there was one person that they want?
One per town, I didn't read that, and I didn't-
Well, when we talked about it, um, with Keith, and, you know, the vice chairs, and the chairs, and the person from MIPC, they had said, we wanted at least one person from each town to be involved in the committee, that's, it wasn't gonna necessarily be called a committee, but, you know, the sort of task forces, but you didn't read that right.
Well, my recollection, and I can look at it again, was he, he just kinda, he sent an email to all the managers in MAGIC kinda saying, oh, think about this, in case you want, any of your towns wanna send any, any reps or have any reps.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to have-
I mean, that's the way, I'll double check in the morning, but that's kinda how I read it.
I think there are some people in town that definitely are, you know, we've got some, although there are people that tend to be involved in a lot of other things, but, you know, I think reaching out to like Kate Crosby and those, you know, Green Acton folks would be a good, a good idea.
Right, yes, so I'll, I'll talk to you, Steve, about how we can advertise it, so that people know that this is happening, the study.
Great, thank you.